The, what is it, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three special meeting of the Air Planning Board. Our agenda is very simple this evening is to introduce interview two candidates for town planner and arrive at a recommendation to submit to our town manager. I do believe I still need a vote to approve the agenda.
So move.
Do I have a second from Jeff?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, both aye, it's unanimous. So first candidate up is is Mr. Ruiz, Mr. Ruiz, if you would approach the table, please.
Hi.
This will give Mr. Ruiz a chance.
This will make it easier. So quick introductions, of course, you know, myself, Jonathan and Ken. We also, Jeff Tilson is the clerk and Julie Murray and Nathan King to your respectively, right and left, left and right. If you would open this, what we're going to do is, as I said earlier, if you would open with just a brief discussion of who you are and why you'd like to be town planner and air, and then I'm going to let everyone ask questions.
Okay. Daniel Ruiz, and so my experience, for seven years, I was a project and permitting develop manager for a developer in Southborough. I've done work with many planning boards, conservation, zoning board, all different types of boards across Massachusetts and many different towns. From there, I went over to the public side in and joined the town of Salisbury as their assistant planner. And my move to the public side was more to try and find a way to help towns get the best projects and get what was best for the town and the residents that they have. And the the position for the town for the town planner, it raised my, it caught my interest when I saw that position opened. It's a small town similar to the town that I work in in Salisbury. It's not a beach town or, you know, kind of like that, but it's got a small town feel, but it still has quite a big, quite a bit of development in it, also has opened a lot of open space. And in these, in a town like this, I felt that I can make a big impact on the town and its residents, as well as assist the town move and moving forward and direction that it would like to go.
So thank you. Who would like to start? Nathan, you have that gleam in your eye.
I'll, I'll, I'll start with a question. So you've, you've been doing private and public work. The, I'll start with some that's hopefully a little easier, but I found that in Massachusetts, there is an alphabet soup of organizations, bureaucracies. And what has been, you, for example, you, when you worked with Capital Group, you worked with various state departments. So how, what's been your experience in navigating the different organizations? And how do you, how have you made your work with them effective?
So you're talking more of like state agencies, like MEPA, DEP.
Yeah.
So in my experience, working with them, it's been fairly, fairly easy. They're, they're pretty, well, it depends on the project, I guess, is what you, what I would say. Typically, reaching out to these departments, you, you want to meet with them, go through these projects in person, you want to make sure to keep them informed. There's a lot of back and forth communication with these, these department and state agencies, making sure that they stay informed on these projects. Because, as you know, you know, the permitting process can sometimes move pretty quickly on the planning board and the town level and kind of moves a little bit slower at the, at the state level with those agencies. Those, so typically, you want to try and start those, that process pretty early on before a project were to come, you know, come before a planning board, making sure that they understand that this is something that could be anticipated and making sure that you really keep touch, keep communication with them. And, and there's various points throughout the projects that you want to make sure you continue to reach out to them. It makes, it just makes the permitting and project through those, dealing with those agencies much quicker and easier.
Keep going. Do you have a follow-up, or would someone else like to leap in with a different question?
Keep going, if you got a few, I mean, I would be fine to do it that way, and I get a new question.
Go ahead.
I'll have a few, so.
So we've just come out of a pandemic. That's one, one, one data point. Another data point is, I see my role here on the planning board as a thirty, fifty-year role. And what's going to, what's the town going to look like? What, what is, what do you think is going to be the most significant change over the next thirty years for small New England towns?
So I think the biggest change for small New England towns is trying to keep the small New England town feel. You know, there's this push towards a lot of condos, you know, bigger developments of that, you know, nature, natural resources being taken down a lot more. So, and, and, you know, specifically in the town of Air, you know, I know you guys have like forty-nine percent of your, you know, of the own, of the land is about open space and natural resources. So I know that's, that's quite a big portion of the Air town. So continuing to make sure that that is something that stays around and as well as the, the move towards green energy, moving towards stormwater, reducing impervious area, making sure you're using green infrastructure, blue infrastructure, those kinds of things to make sure you can also do higher density, less, taking up less open space, providing for that, as well as making sure that there's still economic growth. It's definitely with the pandemic portion, it's, there's been a hit on retail. You don't, you no longer really see these big box stores wanting to go where these big anchors that want to go into these retail plazas because, you know, now they know, they can use a lot of the online portion, you know, like Amazon and that. So they've reduced, they've reduced a lot of their footprints. And they found also a lot of companies now can use remote means to run their company with less overhead. So you see more of that decrease in industrial, commercial, retail space, and now you're seeing more of the expansion of residential, just because now people are leaving these cities, trying to find the suburbs because they can work remote. So it's kind of that push.
Do you have a follow-up on that?
I'm good.
I didn't.
Oh.
I have to actually talk. Welcome, thank you for coming. Thank you for your interest in applying for the job.
That's so nice to say.
Applying for the job of planner here in Air. So you covered a lot around just now, and it's really pretty cool. But you led me, the beginning of, the beginning of your response talked about the terrible side of density, which is condos and things like that for me, okay? And how do you balance the terrible side of density? A project by Pulte Holmes, a project by Emmanuel, a project by Toll, something like that, with the economic benefit of having that dense tax base on that small portion of land? So how do you balance that out?
It's, it's, it's a difficult balance, you know, you have to, there's got to be some, to keep that small feel like you have for Air, you know, there is a lot of that single, single family of homes that you want, but there's, there is the necessity for, you know, multifamily for, so that you, you want the higher density on those smaller parcels so that you're not taking up as much open space. And it's, it's difficult because you really have to balance the two because there's also, you know, when it comes to those bigger density, more affordable housing comes into play as well, and that's a big portion of that as well. You want to push so that there is that inclusion of affordable housing, because what you're seeing also is the increase of cost on housing, which is, at this point, I don't know how.
Throw in the word insane at this point?
Yes. Yeah, there you go.
It's a typical, it's a typical pressure countrywide at this point.
It is.
In most metropolitan, exurban areas like us. So that's, that's, I think we understand that.
Yeah. And especially now with Air and the MBTA zoning as well. But actually, you know, in our last interview, you had talked about that your guys' zones actually already accommodate for that, so that's.
We believe we accommodate, given the MRPC, the monitor's plan, plannings, we believe we accommodate. So it's, so yeah, there's no real answer to that question?
Yeah.
Okay, which is good, but the, what is the benefit of a higher density?
Well, there can be a lot of, a lot of benefits in the sense of if you had a property that's, let's, let's say a couple, you know, five acres, and you want to make sure that you, you're decreasing your footprint, so you're going to want to go vertical or mixed use, you know, something like that, so that you're reducing how much impervious area there is, how much stormwater runoff there is, you know, protection of the natural resources in the area. So it's a, it's a, you know, tough balance between the two. So it's, it's one of those things that you really have to, each situation is, is different.
Not to be argumentative, the planning board's job is to maintain the tax base in town, and everything you've mentioned is really, is a nice, nice to have from the standpoint of taxation. Can you speak about the financial side of density for me for a minute?
Yeah, so typically, on the, on the financial portion is the amount of units that you have is typically how much the, you know, the tax bases, you know, taxes paid out of those. So the more units you have, the more tax base you have. But you can also kind of make that up with commercial and industrial, you know, so that, there's, there's going to be a balance between that. So you don't want it all, you don't want all of your tax base coming out of residential. You want to make sure that there's an even spread where you're getting industrial.
Of all, of all your commercial, industrial, and residential types ways, thank you.
May I, if it's okay, I know I said I was going to shut up, but follow up. Tell us, how would you feel comfortable in a situation, how would you deal with a situation where we had a proposal that actually met some, or met our criteria, was dense, and we had butters or people, you know, who show up and say, you know, this just doesn't have our, our, this doesn't feel like Air. You know, this is, this is, this is, you know, Concord, this is, this is Cambridge or something, not Concord, Cambridge or Boston. How would you respond to that, to a public concern like that?
So actually, I can, we have a project currently before us right now where there's a, it's a less than an acre parcel, and they're, they were trying to fit twenty-four units on it. So it's very, very tight, and that was one of their big concerns was, was that exact same thing was, it was too dense.
You can see the beach from the fifth floor, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So it was, that was the, one of the big concerns was dense, density. And what we did was, we tried to, we met with the applicant, and we also met with the residents, and tried to facilitate a way that we could kind of come to some sort of a middle agreement in the way. And they've actually now just reduced to units down to twenty, accommodating more visitor parking, and now, we haven't had the meeting yet, but at the next meeting, we would, we're going to discuss that and go through it with the residents.
And so, excuse me for a second.
Go for it.
This is through the planning board, not through zoning board of appeals?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's yours, it's yours.
No, I'm just curious, because when you say we, just.
Sorry, the planning board.
That's quite right, I mean, we wear many hats in this room. Couple of us are in Fort Worth, a couple of us are in CPC, a couple of us are in a lot of different things, some are in neighborhood stuff, so we wear a lot of hats. So sometimes when we say we, we may be talking not about what's in the room. I just want to double check with that. Okay, I do have other questions, but if you.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
What do you do?
My question goes off of that. So I don't think thirty years out, I mean, that's good. But I tend to think more immediate, and I won't ask you about the wildlife when they fly through the room. We'll just have to deal with that when that happens. But for Salisbury, if you could, which we know we have a lot of constraints as a planning board, right? We can't do everything. But if you could, what would be your planning vision for Salisbury in the next few years?
So for Salisbury, as, so it would be trying to bring in a little bit more of, right now they have this Lafayette and Main Commercial District that's not, they just put in sewer, and it, as of right now, there's a lot of land that's just undeveloped. That's a perfect area to bring in, you know, the commercial and industrial portion, to bring in a little bit more of that tax revenue for that portion of the area, as well as down at the beach, you know, there's a lot more, it's all basically residential down there. And what they're moving towards down there is, a lot of people are doing a little bit more condos, so it's bringing in an increase of tourism for that area. They're also revi, we're working on reviving or redesigning the Broadway Mall area down at the beach, which is the beach center area, so reworking that area to try to bring more people in there, as well as trying to make the entrance to the town areas look a little bit more presentable. We've worked on a new design guideline for the Lafayette Main, which is one of the, you know, main corridors that you see in Salisbury, and it, it increased, it's, we've added street trees, you know, street landscaping to make it look a little bit more presentable in that sense, so it doesn't just look like all concrete, and it looks more inviting.
I only really had one other question, so can I just?
Go for it, Julie.
I don't want to keep you out of our time. But you had talked about working in the private sector and then switching to public sector. So you're interested in this job, and you touched on it in your cover letter, but can you say a little more about what keeps you staying within the public sector?
Yeah, so, you know, working in the private sector for seven years, it's, the, the push in the private sector is really, you know, revenue, you know, making sure that you're getting the, the development that you want. There's not always that balance of what the town wants and what, you know, what the residents need. And so I kind of got a little burnt out on that side.
Yeah.
And come over to the public sector because I wanted to more help the towns get the projects that they, that actually deserve, like, I, I try to apply the knowledge that I took from, you know, the developer side and how they think and what they, what they're envisioning for their projects, and try to apply that to how we can look at the project and try to make it a little bit of a better project and work with the applicant on suggesting different things that could still get the same outcome that they want, but it increase, it has a better feel for the town and as well for the residents so that they're, you know, they feel like they're on board.
Awesome, thank you. I'm good.
Continue, please, Nathan.
So, as you see there, we had an symposium a few months ago, actually now, on Devens, where we may, we may absorb part of Devens in twenty thirty-three, so there's going to be a ten-year, a ten-year plan. We also have recently just completed an infrastructure project on West Main Street, which is adjacent to Devens, and we've introduced form-based code, which maybe you've never seen.
Yes.
So I anticipate that we are going to get applications for some projects that we are not very experienced with as a, as a board, maybe, maybe Ken has experience. But tight development up close to the street, blends of commercial, retail, residential. What, what is, how are you? You say you know well how the private sector thinks, experienced with, well, how are you going to help us with these, which, which potentially may be very challenging, because this is the first time our form-based code is going to be exercised in an application? How are, how are you going to be able to help us through those applications?
So I've never dealt with form-based, you know, zoning for, in the form-based code for, in my, in my experience, you know, I would definitely need to make sure I understand the ins and outs of form-based code, and, and I would have to review the projects in, in a, in a way where getting possibly some, some consultant help to make sure the first one is, you know, goes smoothly, because that's kind of going to set this, you know, set the, the road for every, all the other applications that come in through. So that's going to be like the most important one, and making sure that you, I understand everything that there is to do with form-based code and how that would apply to the planning board and how their review of that project would take place. So without really reading the zoning and all that information, I don't know exactly how I can, to give you a definitive answer on that, but that would be kind of my, how I would attack that.
Just FYI, we've, I'm sorry. We've had the form-based code in the books for a number of years now, but I don't think we've had a single project come under the form-based code yet.
Okay.
It'll be new to us as well.
We have had two.
Which ones?
Park Street. And you're right, we've had, we've discussed two. One, one got permitted and they never built.
Okay.
Three-Five Park. May I?
Yeah.
So you worked in a bunch of towns.
Mm-hmm.
I know you weren't in the public sector at the time. Can you, if I would have picked the towns that are similar to ours just off this list, Maynard is one, Sudbury's another, Shrewsbury, kind of on the line, Hopkinton also. It's not in those towns of the seven you worked in, but I have two questions. What was, you stood up, swung the bat, got the home run, and what was, you had to slog through it project forever? And why did that happen? What was the piece that broke down or would made it successful?
Okay, so the first, well, the, I would say the slugfest, the first one, that one would be in Maynard, the digital headquarters project, Maynard Crossings.
Sure.
So I was the project manager and permitting manager on that one. That took quite a long permitting process that I, before I'd come to the company.
Delta Orples?
Uh, no, Maynard Crossings.
Okay, thank you.
On seventeen and twenty-seven.
Oh, I know where it is, yep, okay. Because I did the, I did the old, one of the old mills in there.
Oh, okay.
I'm old enough to have done that stuff, but go ahead, yeah.
So that project actually had, you know, been in the process prior to me joining, and then when we got there, we had redesigned, we did a full redesign, so they had been working on that for like five years. And we did a redesign of the project, which ended up the way it is now. And what we did, there was tons of meetings with residents to make sure all the residents on those side residential streets were going to be okay with the project. There was, you know, landscaping, he, like, just rows and rows of landscaping for protection and screening. We talked about lighting, we discussed lighting hours. There was an O and M plan that went through every single thing you can think of there.
How did you handle the thirty-second change in level of service on the road for six minutes a day?
That was, that was, that was another big thing.
How do you handle, yeah, okay.
The traffic impact.
So, and a success?
And then a success, Framingham, well.
Use Framingham, that's perfectly fine.
Framingham, the old Millwood Golf Course, I don't know if you know that one? We worked with the town of, what that, city town, at that point, they were still a town.
Yep.
Framingham, and we worked with the planner in that area and worked with the board and the residents, and come up with, came up with a, a development that kept almost forty acres of open space and still had a hundred and twenty-nine units for an over fifty-five development. That was, that moved pretty smoothly, even through conservation and, and planning. It was quite the, it was, when we came forward with that open space proposal, as well as improvements in infrastructure for water, infrastructure, updating the pump station, that helped the projects definitely move quicker, quicker.
So was there a single application of some skillset in both of those that got them to the finish line?
Uh, yeah, it's definitely working with the residents and the, and working with the planning board at that time. It's communication, making sure you're balancing the two, working with all the parties to make sure that you can, because one, you're not going to make every party happy, but you can try to get to as far as you can to make most parties happy, and there's not going to be a hundred percent, but it's give and take to make sure you get the project that you want and that all the other residents in town wants.
Thank you.
Ken, did you have a?
I'll ask a question, this is kind of the similar question that I asked when we met last week, and that is, could you explain to the board, at this particular point in time, you do not have, let's say, a master's degree in planning, you don't have certain types of certifications, so you're depending on your experience in the private sector, your engineering background and your experience in Salisbury. Can you give us an idea of how you would get to the next level as far as education and the planning, so that you become certified and things like that, what you would work towards to get to that stage?
So I'm already actually working towards that. I have my AICP exam next Tuesday, which is the certification for planners.
An Alexe Planner.
It's, it's a certification for planners, and it's, it's, it's acknowledged all across the U.S. So I'm working towards that, and I know there, there was a portion of grant writing in, that was raised as well as a question. I would, you know, take courses on how to, you know, grant writing, how to do grant writing, as well as making sure that there is, there's a lot of programs out there that they do, public, they, CPTC, I think it is. You know, so we did those.
Ruby's in the room.
There was the one in Worcester that was previously in March, so attending those, they, they also have the webinars that you can do, so making sure that I stay up to code, you know, up to date on everything like that.
And I'll tell you right now, MRPC has actually hired consultants to help people write grants for their towns. We put sixty grand in that just recently, because they've got to develop, they have to develop projects to spend their money on, and they found out that people can't do it. A lot of, a lot of grant writing expertise disappeared in the last eighteen months. Anybody have other questions?
I, I'm just watching the clock and time, so given the few minutes remaining, two things. One is, do you have any, we interviewed you a week ago.
Yep.
And I was wondering if in any interim between then and now, if you have additional questions about Air, this position, anything?
Um, no, not, not any additional questions.
Would you like to make a closing statement for the board?
Yes, you know, I want to thank, thank you guys for the opportunity to interview for this position, and I hope that my answers were, you know, sufficient for your questions, and I look forward to hearing you guys deliberate about this.
Thank you.
Is there anything in our, either in today or in our previous meeting, anything we overlooked that you feel like we missed that you want to make sure that we understand about you? Anything you want to add?
Oh, I think, I think.
You know, by the time you get to the end of the sidewalk updating, I think you'll be like, oh!
So.
You can call Ken.
As you heard me say earlier, we're, we're going to make a recommendation to the town. You met Robert tomorrow. I can't answer you when he's going to get that out. That I don't know.
Okay.
But I imagine it's going to be soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you much. See you all. COVID rules.
COVID rules.
No, we don't shake hands and chirp either. Don't touch anybody. Are we recording this for minutes or for people?
What? I think we're rocking.
We don't record our other meetings. You guys are the only ones that.
Yeah.
Rock this recording thing.
Yeah.
Hi!
So, let me make a, so remember Jonathan and Ken?
Wow, I forgot that was.
And this is Mr. Brian Keating. Jeff Tilson, our clerk, Julie Murray, and Nathan King. Since Ken and I have had the opportunity to interview you.
We're the newly elected members of the board.
What's that?
We're the newly, we're the first elected members of the board.
Re-elected, re-elected.
Congratulations.
Just having fun with Mr. Keating.
So, I'm sorry, I lost my, my thing. So the way, what I'd like us to do is this, just as you had previously, ask a brief introductory comments from you, just introducing yourself and why being town player, planner and air interests you, and then questioning, I'm going to ask, going to concentrate on the three members who weren't in the previous, in the room previously, they're going to get, do the bulk of, ask the bulk of the questions today. We have half an hour, and as it gets close to the end, I'm going to leave a little time for you to give a closing statement.
Sure.
So with that said, if you'd like to open up and tell us who you are and why Air.
As my resume says, my name is Brian Keating, I've been a resident.
I've been a resident of Pepperell for the past seventeen years. Uh, also roughly, well, I, um, began, um, my mid-career was spent in education and job training program, Youth Build, spent a lot of years, um, educating, um, in training young adults and disadvantaged young adults in, um, challenging towns such as Lowell, Attleboro, Manchester, New Hampshire. Uh, then I made a mid-career change and came to planning. So I began with the Neighborhood Stabilization Program in Manchester, which I, um, became very familiar with, uh, issues such as affordable housing. I, um, had moved on to, uh, regional planning at the Want to Choose It Regional Planning Commission, uh, where I did a CDBG program, uh, again, more housing and, but also did some public infrastructure. And then, um, four years, uh, with the, I continued to work with the City of Methuen. Uh, we're more in a planning capacity in terms of, uh, you know, staff planning, but my position being senior, uh, senior planner, worked a lot with, um, master planning, downtown development, uh, downtown revitalization projects, infrastructure projects, uh, grant funding, managing the grant projects, uh, even doing some of the construction, construction management. So over the years, I've become very familiar with, um, planning and, and the development process. And so, uh, I am, uh, very interested in taking the next step and becoming a town planner for a, for a small town or for a urban town, as you may, uh, think it was characterized during our first interview, uh, in a town in my, in my area that I've become very fond of and, uh, and I want to work to develop in a, in a positive direction.
Well, thank you. Who'd like to begin with questions? Nathan, please, go right ahead.
I'll jump in, jump right in.
You mentioned you worked with, uh, young adults.
Mm-hmm.
They are going to adopt this country. Do you think they will succeed?
I do, actually. I think that the, um, well, I mean, there's a glitch with the pandemic, education deficits, uh, but assuming that, um, these deficits are overcome. But I do, I do, I am impressed with the younger generations, um, progressive thinking, analytical thinking, uh, not falling into, uh, you know, pigeonholes policy-wise, but also have, uh, they, they, they seem to have a, um, a wider community spirit than I think other past generations have.
Good. So I saw you worked on a proposal for North Andover's, um, commuter rail station.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not familiar with that. Uh, one of the, one of my primary interests in this town, one is we have a unique downtown neighborhood right here on Main Street, and one of the assets is our, our train station, uh, which could be much different in the years to come. If, can you describe a little bit what this, uh, what your project is? And then if it succeeds, what do you think would be the most significant factor?
Sure. Okay, well, the project in, in North Andover is particularly, it's a feasibility study. It was a topic that was brought up by the, in a public forum during the master planning process. The city itself is not, you know, a hundred percent committed or is gung-ho, is looking for this to happen, you know? Just in response to the master plan, it was just to, let's get a feasibility study started and see what it would take to bring MBTA, uh, a commuter rail station to, through North Andover. Of course, there's a station in Lawrence and there's two stations in, um, in Haverhill, uh, there's something, you know, some, so there, the, is it needed? Not sure. The fact that, uh, without guiding the feasibility study there, the new Amazon Distribution Warehouse, you know, one point three million square feet is, is opening there. And, uh, you know, so probably there would be consideration of having a, a station, you know, a commuter rail station to the, to the rear of that, you know, where the, where it does a butt, does the right away, the, the rail right away. But, uh, so that was the, that was the extent of the project. We just got a feasibility study out and, uh, so I'm not there, I'm back in Methuen, so I, I haven't got the follow-up on that, but that was the extent of the project. Uh, where, and, uh, of course, a commuter rail station here in, uh, in air, I think, is a valuable asset. Of course, people wanna get on the train, get it into downtown Boston without driving, freeing up, you know, reducing the, the carbon footprint that way. Uh, and I think if the downtown was designed intelligently, uh, as I'm sure this, the direction it's going, there'll be lots of multimodal connections to the rail station and not necessarily needing to build a, you know, large parking garage, you know, to, 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 to be a part of that. Parking is critical, but, um, I think, um, you know, looking at ways to, um, provide access to multimodal modes of, multimodal transportation would be key to, to making this, um, a, a rail asset to, to air and the region.
Thank you. Julie or Jeff?
I'll go first?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. I would say, I don't, I don't know if I, North Andover or Methuen, but do you have a vision that if, if it could be your vision, clearly working within these groups, that you would like to see for planning for those, either for North Andover or Methuen, that you would like to see? What's, what would be your future vision for one of those? No, for either...
Oh, for one of those communities? Okay, well, I'm much more invested in, in Methuen, of course.
Yep.
And Methuen is, uh, you know, it's a, it's, it's almost the opposite of air. It's a, it's a city that's more like a town as, as opposed to like...
That's a great, that's a great description.
You know, because, uh, you know, it is bordered by Haverhill and Lawrence. Uh, but I would like to see, um, Methuen and, you know, where I'm working as well is taking a more progressive, um, direction towards, towards development. Now, for instance, I'm working on, um, bringing an Affordable Housing Trust to Methuen. However, Community Preservation Act is probably a bridge too far. You know, we don't think with the politics there that it would be, um, that would be, um, acceptable. He struck out on marijuana, on a marijuana bylaw, you know? So we're looking for ways to, um, you know, bring extra revenue through these, um, you know, creative, innovative, revenue generating plans. But, um, you know, and, and of course, the, the course of Methuen, you know, the downtown, like a lot of downtowns were spun out, you know, to the highways. Uh, so a lot of effort is going into, um, revitalizing our historic downtown. So we've had some success, especially with infrastructure state grants, Mass Works, Housing Choice, shared streets, complete streets, to bring the infrastructure to the point where, um, some, some economic development can happen there as well. Where we look at, um, you know, other, um, forms of zoning such as, um, you know, form-based zoning or, uh, uh, you know, other innovative zoning to, to, to get that done. We, uh, we did implement, which is a success in Methuen, uh, we did implement a forty R. We did adopt a forty R, um, zoning rig, and we're making some great progress towards bringing some, um, you know, redeveloping some historic buildings, which is bringing mixed use and affordable housing to the area. And we have a very large one, hopefully in the pipeline, you know? But we may do that as a forty B just so we can get our, over our ten percent and then have more control over some other projects that we think might be, um, coming in. That may, but it may not be, you know, if we do it under a forty B, they may not be as friendly as some of our forty R developers. But that's, so our, our planning department there and the projects that I'm working on there, I, um, I'm more, you know, in, using innovative state-funded approaches to bring in, um, you know, a revitalized downtown.
Thank you. You, Jeff?
Following up on that, when you say innovative state-funded approach, is, is it because the community that you're working in doesn't wanna put the money up?
They are very, it's a conservative mindset. No, I mean, the, the town itself, the city, I'm sorry, um, doesn't have a, a large tax base, so there isn't a lot of, um, money in the general funds to be, um, you know, we're, we really rely on chapter ninety and, and some of these state funds to do projects that are outside the normal maintenance and, you know, road construction projects. There's not too much left over at the end of the year.
So what are they doing in their, in, so I see, and I said it before, I'll say it again, the basis of the planning is to bring funds into the community for the community to support itself.
Yeah.
So communities that get in a position where they aren't bringing funds in from their zoning, I, I always ask the question. We got here somehow, what are we doing to dig ourselves out? So I guess the question is, what are they doing to dig themselves out of that?
Well, I mean, that's why I'm here. I guess I don't see a lot, uh, you, you know, other than state funds, and we really tried to get the marijuana bylaw passed, um, there's not a lot of movement to generate, um, those, those revenues, I'm afraid. And, you know...
I guess I'm, I just, I'm not familiar with the community at all, so I, I don't know, cause, um, okay. Thank you. Yeah, I've just, in, in reading through that, it's an, it's an interesting approach. I'll keep my opinions to myself. Go ahead. I'm sorry?
I'm just giving you a...
First time ever, right?
I know.
Yeah, I know. So you mentioned that you work for the MBTA. I'm just going through my notes.
No, I didn't work for, I just worked on a, on a...
Excuse me, strong feeling of experience with planning for the drafting zoning amendments to achieve compliance with the new MBTA Communities Law.
Oh, the MBTA Communities.
Yeah, the MBTA Communities Law. I guess, yeah. I can't read my writing, Ken. Explain, describe.
Sure, so as you're all familiar with the, uh, section three A of the forty eight of the zoning act, um, you know, um, towns that are, um, host a, an MBTA station or adjacent to are required to, um, you know, either look at their zoning to see if there is a sufficient number of, of, um, housing units that are, um, by right, multifamily by right. Or if there's not, we, you know, towns are required to look at their zoning, um, adjust, modify, amend so that there is, um, you know, multifamily housing by right to the tune of, what is it, twenty percent of the, uh, of the housing units, of the year-round housing units need to be, um, it's, it's not a production bar. It's, you, you just need to be able to accommodate. The zoning needs to be able to legally accommodate that number of housing. So for instance, in Methuen, I think we need to show some zones. So we were looking at our forty R district, but that didn't, you know, met, met the size and it met the, um, density, but it didn't, wouldn't, a build-out did not show that it would, that it would have, um, would accommodate the required number of, um, units. So we have to adjust. And right now, we're in the process of doing that. We're in a phase one of a, a technical assistance grant, looking at different scenarios. You know, probably combining forty R with a neighboring, um, district where multifamily is the one district we have that is allowed by right, not by right, by special permit. And that way, um, hopefully we would get there, but, uh, it's a long process. We're doing, I was doing the same thing in, um, North Andover, and they were looking at going down, um, on, um, getting a, a larger commercial zone to be able to, um, allow developers there or landowners there to be able to build up and, and with, with the allowed density and get their, um, that, that, that compliance met.
Make a call.
Please, jump in.
So, uh, you mentioned with Methuen that, uh, you had experienced some headwinds with some things you thought were responsible, but faced opposition. So I wanna say in a general way, um, how do you deal with the situation in which is initiative, which in your best judgment, professional judgment, is the responsible, right thing to do, but faces considerable popular opposition? What do we do? What do you do?
Education, public education, um, you know, designing public forums or, um, that will, um, allow as many people as possible coming into a room and breaking out into workshops, have a panel of, of experts, perhaps, you know, going to agencies and, and getting experts to talk about the importance of some of these things, for instance, the marijuana, you know? I mean, it is just a, a boondoggle for towns, you know? There's a lot of work to it, but there's a lot of money coming in. But there's, when you have a, you know, we, I can point to one person in particular that was so strongly against it. She was a, she's a, you know, you know, she's a wonderful neighborhood advocate, you know, the low-income neighborhood in Methuen, but she is so dead-set against it, you know, she almost single-handedly, uh, and there's no talking to her in this thing, you know? She's a wonderful person, but, um, this, she was dead-set against, and she brings out her organization, she brings out her voices, and they just say no. But I think there's no, that's not to say that education, public education in, um, evidence-based information does not, will not help in, in other situations. So that's what we always look towards.
Thank you. Ken, did you have a question?
I'm not sure if this is, we brought this up during the other interview or not, but this question is regarding an applica, a typical application. Let's say it's a subdivision application that comes into the office. Do you have a checklist in your mind or, or from your experience of what you would look for, for red flags in an application? So, how, you know, as you, as an application comes in, there's gonna be, you know, we've got our rules and regulations, we've got subdivision regulations, but as a, could you rattle off some of the red flags you might be looking for in the application process?
Uh, sure, um, I, I think what you're looking for is, um, traffic flow, um, you know, is, you know, where is the parking in the, in the, in the, um, in the, um, I'm just trying to think of, but the flow of the traffic through the subdivision. It, does it, does it, does it, does there appear to be conflicts between, you know, if it's on a, if it's a budding on a main road or, or, um, a major road, you know, what are the, what, what are the conflicts there? Are there, is there other parking and what is the emergency vehicles? If you see some turns or, uh, a cul-de-sac or something that doesn't, isn't allowing, you know, turnarounds or another, um, another, you know, of course, if there's slopes and contours and wetlands, almost the first thing we look at is wetlands, you know? Where is the delineation? Have they, where are their markers? You know, did they, does it look like that they're cutting back or cutting too, too close to, 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 uh, the setbacks and, and the buffers? Those are some of the things we always look at pretty closely.
Do you have an, an engineering background so that you can take a look at a set of drawings? Or would you typically...
I'm not an engineer, of course, but I am very familiar with looking at site plans, you know, so I mean, I've always had a, be, have an ability to read site plans.
Oh, good.
Jeff, earlier you had asked a question about, um, a project that slugged and a project was successful. Would you consider...
Repeat the question, please. Okay. In your experiences in planning on the municipal side, um, I imagine there's our, there's a winner and a loser. The project that just went straight through, it was great, everyone was happy. And the project that was a slugfest. Okay? As I described it earlier, stepped up, first pitch, home run. The next one, they just threw pitches and you just follow them off, and it's a slugfest. Can you describe one of each? The community it's in, what it was? That's the start.
Sure. Okay, let's see. Uh, one were, it's in the pipeline now. It's, it was a, um, a vacant lot. We, we assembled, well, we asked through the RFP, oh, I think I sent you this. Okay, so, yeah, so that was an interesting one and it's still ongoing, uh, cause the town owned just a, um, point two seven acres of it, but there was available, you know, surrounding vacant lots that were, um, we asked that the developer was able then through the RFP to assemble. Okay. Uh, he came back in order to make this project work, he was... Okay. He came back in order to make this project work. He was proposing 58 units of housing, and it would require, you know, dimensional variations, height, and density, of course. So, but the administration was, well, it would be tough sell zoning, but we were pushing through it through 40R, okay? Now, again, we're asking for him to, you know, so they had to go back and retool that, you know. So that was, this is an example of a more challenging one that we thought would, you know. Personally, I was looking for it to go through as a 40R, because it would have been the key to revitalization of our downtown, bringing that business there.
That's still a work in progress right now?
Yes, that's still, yeah, right now, we retool the RFP so that they would, we wouldn't have to go out to auction for the property, but that it would not necessarily have to be a 40R. He could come back and submit a comprehensive permit, so, which I think would, is probably the better way to go.
Would it be all residential or mixed use?
It would be mixed use.
Okay, thank you.
Well, 40B, it would, it would be all residential, yeah.
Say 40R, you have a 40R district sometimes.
Right, well, that allows the, but this way, I think, you know, this is the path that I was advocating, because this way, I think we'll get over our 10%, and then we see other potentially hostile 40Bs coming into town that's going to impact historical space, open space, that we would then be able to control, you know, if we get into our safe harbor. Let me see, project that went through easily, probably the best one I can think of is up in Manchester. When we did the NSP, we were able to partner with some neighborhood Chodos, and we were able essentially to redevelop whole neighborhoods, you know, disadvantaged neighborhoods. Of course, the, you know, there was no opposition. We were developing abandoned properties, blighted properties. And I think in one neighborhood, I'm thinking in particular, the Granit Street neighborhood, there was at least four homes, structures that were involved, which resulted in six or seven units of housing, you know, newly affordable housing. And I think that just, that was, I think that was just a home run right out of the box, or whatever, and whatever metaphor you want to use. It was a very successful project, and that was replicated in other neighborhoods in Manchester through the.
Was managed by Manchester Affordable Housing now, or how are they managed?
Yes, yes, yeah.
So they became public, it's public housing, truly public housing being managed by?
Well, it's not public housing in the sense that they're managed by, well, there was, some of these were homeownership opportunities that were done through lottery. But then they were also managed by the Chodos up there, so families in transition. The other name's escaping me right now, but there was a Neighbor Works affiliate up there.
Manchester, Massachusetts, Manchester, New Hampshire?
This is Manchester, New Hampshire.
Yeah, I'm not as familiar with the acronyms in Manchester.
Right, well, it was, they started as a Neighbor Works of, they're now the Neighbor Works of Southern, Southern New Hampshire.
So what's the one skill that carries across both those projects that makes them work?
Mm-hmm. One skill, well, I think it's being able to envision from beginning to end, you know. I think managing the process, managing the budgets, managing the flow. You know, you're bringing, you're doing procurement, you're doing budget management, you're doing construction management, of course, grant management. So I would say the one skill that flows all the way through, almost financial. I mean, I think, you know, budget management, making sure that the, all the pro formas are working, and, you know, that would be one skill that I would think that would flow.
I've got an eye on the clock, so we're.
Yeah, is enough time at least for another question?
I'm satisfied at this point.
Thank you.
I'll do one. I've heard recently we have a 200,000 housing unit shortfall in Massachusetts. From what you said, Ryan, you've tried for private, you've tried private route to make projects work. See the need, and I think it sounds like you have a good understanding of the public mechanisms to, to make the public side work. Ayr is 8,500 or so people, slowly growing. We've developed a lot of our boundary areas and conserving more of that. There's real opportunities downtown. And Ayr, I think, in my opinion, could go, it could inflect, especially post-pandemic and people moving around. What, so I expect to get more inquiries for projects, applications in the downtown area. How will you, first, what do you, let me give you two questions. What do you see happening in the next 30 years in small towns like Ayr? And how will, how will your experience, both private, public? What do you see helping Ayr develop to be a, have a sustainable, continue to have a sustainable tax base and grow?
Well, I think, you know, the key to your question is, you know, zoning reform. So whether it's, you know, form-based housing that, you know, increases density as you get closer to downtown, allowing property owners to build up with, you know, with mixed use on the, commercial on the first floor or housing above. But then also allowing more in the suburban areas of town or the rural sections of town, allowing more, you know, multifamily or two-family or three-family even by right, you know. We have to increase the density in lots. Maybe if you're, you know, zoning reforms that allow that density while preserving open space, of course, and farmlands and environmental, you know, areas of critical environmental concern, streams, whether it's wetlands or whatnot. I think all the tools are in place. They just need to be accepted more openly by town meetings and by city councils. And I think a key, you know, task for our planning boards and planning commissions are to increase that education, you know, show that this can work, you know, this is where we need to go. And going through the same thing in, you know, in Pepperell, our planning board, and I'm on the Affordable Housing Committee there and the CPC, it's, you know, people think that their town is special, you know, that development shouldn't happen here, can only, should happen everywhere else, you know. Well, that's not true, you know. You know, we, the state has been trying to crack this housing crisis since 1969, right, or even before, through different, you know, formalism, funding programs and innovative ideas. We have to get on board, and every town has its responsibility to do its share. So I think, you know, the inclusionary zoning, I think it was a good way for Ayr to go, you know, for every five units built, there needs to be a sixth affordable unit. And that requires higher density, you know, building, and allowing that, that higher density to occur in more, in more areas in town, you know, whether it's through more housing, through more residential districts and commercial districts. Did I get to both parts of your question?
I think, just how do you attract that private side, then?
If we have. Oh, Nathan, I am so sorry, but I'm going to have to cut you off because in respect to the time. So I want to give you time for two things. The first is, we interviewed you a week ago. I was wondering, in the interim, did you have any questions or comments over that week that you have?
Yes, I did. Well, I was, one question was the MBTA. I was wondering how the MBTA communities questioned how you were, but I happened to be sitting out in the hallway and read your annual plan, and it looks like
We made it.
We have, you're in compliance.
We have, we have, we in Pittsburgh are the two communities at this point that MRPC is looking at as having been compliant.
Because everyone else is pulling their hair out.
Whether they change, whether they change the, the goalpost might move, but we're rather fortunate.
Well, then, what was it, the memo come out last month or two months ago, and they said, well, you know, this is really is a housing production. It's not just zoning, you know. So they really want to see some housing come out of this. That's good. And the other question was, you know, in terms of the state-funded grants, is the, is there a one-stop, who's responsible for applying for the one-stop application? Is that town planner? Are we looking?
I think you would be working with Alan Menoy. Remember Alan from Economic and Community Development?
Yes, yeah, okay.
That, we would expect you two to work very closely.
Okay.
Would you like to make a closing statement?
Sure. Okay, well, again, you know, this, I'm coming to you hat in hand, not having had the title or the hat on my head as a town planner. But I really feel like I've had the experience and I've been around it enough that I'm willing and able and very knowledgeable of the, of the, of the position to take this ball and run with it. Again, it's been my mid-career goal to be a town planner, especially in a town where I live, you know, instead of going off into a more wealthy suburb or into a city. I think this A would be the perfect, perfect fit for me. I think it would be, let me see, you know, I bring a wide, you know, not being pigeonholed in, you know, the development process, I bring in a wide range of skills, you know, affordable housing, infrastructure development, some economic development, bring in a lot of skills to this, to the, to the development process, to the application development process.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Keating.
Okay.
So before you go, I just want to let you know, next step. So we are, we are challenged to, our job is to come up with a recommendation to Robert, the town manager, this evening, and we'll get that tomorrow. So that's our job. I can't tell you when Robert will make his decision and get that word out. I just don't know. But I could tell you on our end, we're obligated to give him a recommendation by tomorrow.
Okay.
But thank you very much for coming.
It's nice meeting you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good to see you.
You too.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Nice to see you. I have thought about our deliberation this evening, and what I'd like is, before, to go around, before we arrive at conclusions about who we like, I would like to go around the table first and have us offer our observations first. Observations, comments, do that first, and then I want to move it to the conversation, the deliberation about which candidate, if any, if either.
Can we take a five-minute break first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I ask my question first? Because it doesn't pertain to anyone specifically, but before a break, is that okay, just briefly?
Yes.
I have no comfort at all having this discussion in a meeting that's going to be broadcast on television and live for everyone to view. So I have no problem submitting my thoughts to you directly or to Robert, but I am not, unless you can, after the break.
Yeah, we have to. We have to. We have to.
So that's fine.
OPM, we have to.
Open meeting law means we have to have this meeting publicized, but I think I'm going to refrain from talking, and I will meet with Robert privately, one-on-one. I'm not in a group of five of us, open meeting law.
Julie, we have to, the deliberation, your, has to be an open meeting. It has, that we ask that question, and by law, this conversation is going to be public. And I know it's, it is a little awkward.
So then I'm going to listen and then figure out where I would like to be on that.
And I, and I actually would discourage you from having a private conversation, Robert.
No, I will not.
What I'd like is to go, all of us, and say, whether it's consensus or divided, like to say, this is where we arrived, Robert.
Interesting. So I'll follow how it goes.
All right, thank you. And we're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, we're back. And as I said earlier, what I'd like to do is start by, if we would take turns, offering our observations first before our conclusions or judgments. I wanted to start with this observation. One of the things that I've learned is that this role is a very much a public-facing role. There's no, there's no way around it. And that I'm, when I'm, during the interviews, and in my consideration, I'm thinking very carefully, among other things, not just their experience and skills and expertise, but how I imagine they would function with the public and also with other department heads and functional areas within the town hall. That's what's going on in my mind. Okay, I'm done. Whoever wants to go next.
I'll just jump on that, because that's what I was thinking too, is, and it's hard to judge how the town benefits from a well-run town hall. And it has benefited
Yeah.
from a well-run town hall. And you don't know what the future will hold. You don't know that it'll always be as good a planning board as this planning board.
You've got 30 years on it, man, come on.
So, yeah, I'm trying to estimate how a candidate will handle board changes and then work with the, the rest of the principals, as you said, Jonathan, in our, in our town.
Thank you, Nathan.
I just wanted to comment that I think this is the most important decision that we've had to make as a planning board.
I agree.
You know, we can look at plans and drawings and laws and regulations, but now we're talking about, you know, a professional career and the ramifications of it. So I think it's going to, you know, it takes a little, a lot of thought for us to figure this out. I will say also that I'm a little disappointed in the fact that we only had a half an hour. I thought we could have taken a little more time, but if that's what it takes, then we'll have to work within that. And when we did, the board did not have the ability to see what happened in the other interviews. So the board is not completely, you know, tuned in to how other questions were answered. But in general, I don't know that there was a substantial difference. Would you say that there was, there was?
No, I think.
I mean, between what happened a week or two ago and what happened today.
I think it was very similar. We got more detail because we had more time. But I think that what you saw is what we saw.
Yeah.
Would you agree?
I think that the main difference between tonight and what happened last week, if I'm summarizing, tell me if I'm wrong, was that we had Dan Van Skelkuk at the table with us and Alan Menoy. So there was more of an interchange on the engineering side as far as Dan Van Skelkuk is concerned. So we, there were some more technical questions, I think, a week or so ago than there were tonight.
There were some technical, yes.
How would you feel the candidates did, and the technical was one stronger than the other?
I thought so.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
So, I, no, continue. I don't want, I'm not going to ask which candidates.
You asked us to go around the table first, so that was my little quick summary.
I will share that I purposely asked my questions about their vision for the future of the towns they work in, partly just for what it would teach us.
And they were damn good questions, thank you.
But to be honest, they actually both work in my hometowns. So they were.
Yes, I knew that.
I know. So as my mother would say, I will inherit a house in Salisbury. And I spent most of my years in Methuen. So it was, yeah.
Yes.
So it was helpful for me, ironically, as a person with probably less background in planning, to hear about the communities and how they were shared. So that was a really important question for me as far as how those communities were reflected in those answers.
You know, I meant to say that I did appreciate the quality of the questions, by the way. Thank you.
We are fabulous. I mean, really, it's just great.
Please, thank you.
I gave my.
Oh, you went out of turn? I know, I'm only kidding, man. So here's, I'm very pleased that when we put together the description of the job, the job description, and it went out into the ether, that I think we were very clear that we are a, I'm going to use words, a very dynamic town right now. Got a whole lot going on. We have started to pushing envelope on how zoning works, OSRD, form-based code. I think we're seriously looking at changing multi-unit. We've looked hard at harking. So, so these are new, okay? One of the critique, criticism I heard a lot in the last few years was unavailable to communicate, not a good communicator, not an energetic communicator. So I wrote questions in my mind of which personality do I want in the public-facing job? Okay? One of the candidates never said the word communication. Let him down the road looking for that answer, didn't get it. So I think the town of Ayr deserves to have an energetic person who So I think the town of AIR deserves to have an energetic person who is not afraid of the cellphone, who is not afraid of picking up the phone. And I, based on that, I have made a decision.
And I must, I have an opinion as well, but I want to hold off.
And I have, you know, and I can be a tough person to work with, I can be in people's face and I understand that, so.
Excuse me for a second.
Please go ahead.
So you just reminded me of one question that we did ask the other day. And it was a question I asked to both of them. And it was an example of, if you recall the question?
Remind me, please.
If a person comes into the office, off the street into the office. And it didn't have to be any more than an addition to your house, it could be a big development, it could be any number of combinations. This person walks in off the street to your office, how are you going to handle that conversation with that person and how are you gonna inform them of what needs to be done? And then, if you don't have the answer, what are you gonna do next? And one applicant did give a better answer than another applicant last week. So that was, I didn't have a chance to ask that tonight, but we did ask that the other day.
Were you able to share that with us in this conversation? Because at some point, this is a little strange to hear about the strengths of different things when we weren't at a meeting.
So it's something Nathan asked a question.
Right, like, that's nice, but I don't know how that changes my answer.
I think what happened, I'm just trying to round this off.
Yeah.
I believe in a previous timeframe, none of us were involved with hiring a town planner.
Absolutely, that's exactly true.
So the management, town managers' office, I believe, is trying to reach out beyond themselves to the rest of us, so they were all involved. So it almost as though that the conversation could have ended with that other group. But I think we've all been given a chance now to be more involved, which I think is a better solution.
And I appreciate that, and one of the things that we do as a planning board, and I'll make this observation, because I saw how it used to be and how it is now, none of us are shy about showing up in the planner's office and saying, let me dig in with you.
Exactly.
So that's a large part of it for me also.
It's a big deal.
And one of the things I heard with Daniel was, Nathan asked him a question, he didn't know the answer, still have to go find out.
Yep, that was important.
That's the person I typically say hello to, that opens a door for me, so.
So I just want to say, we are now transitioning from observations now to deliberations. Okay, so this is totally legit. I didn't mean to cut you off, Jeff.
No, I'm just, I just spent, go ahead.
So we weren't, three of us weren't there, can you name names now for?
Yes, we can.
For how that answering went?
So, do you want to go first?
You go.
So what I would say is that, first of all, one of the things I noticed is that...
I'm sorry, before you jump in, I also see this as a building a team exercise. You mentioned that before and I wanted to just say that again. And that was the other piece, personalities have to mesh.
Well, that leads into what else, just...
That's, I'm sorry.
No, no, nothing's wrong, that's a perfect segue.
Thank you.
Perfect segue, because, you know, what I was looking for here, but also in the previous, like, well, not just like the substance of what they had to say, but how they say and what the chemistry is or not. And what I noticed was that, you know, Daniel was, with, with Dan and with Alan, with Dan, you could get into the engineering and there was a rapport immediately with the engineering. And then with Alan, there was a rapport on policy. And they connected, and that meant something to me, it's like, okay, you know, I was aware of that. I feel that both candidates are qualified, you know, that's, so the good news is we have two qualified candidates. That's great news. However, in my mind, if I were to think in terms of the team, think about public-facing and then then being able to collaborate, cooperate and resolve conflicts with people in town hall, you know, my God, is, I'm leaning to Mr. Ruiz, to be honest.
I support that recommendation.
I move.
I, the other thing I noticed, I didn't notice it as much tonight as I did last week, is when Mr. Ruiz came into the room last week, cold turkey, he seemed to grab the room when he came in. And I thought that was pretty admirable for young, you know, his presence was obvious. And his diction was obvious to me last week. I was, I think I was sitting in the same chair now that I think of it. And his clarity was noticeably, noticeable to me.
He has a presence in the room. What's interesting is you were talking about that and as he was discussing and he was engaging, you may all remember that he lists an outside activity on his resume, the guy who runs the backfield, the defensive backfield. It's either a safety or an outside linebacker, they're the guy who have to look, adjust, make the adjustments with the defense. Just, it's a role that you play. You play with other people, but it's a role that you play with the other 10 guys or 10 people on the field. So, you know, I, represents a change from the past, which I think would be welcome. Neither candidate's going to understand our paperwork, how our processes work. They both have worked in municipal, so they understand mass general law, they don't know our regulations, they don't know our bylaws, that's quite all right, that will come with time.
Exactly.
And I think Mr. Ruiz worked with a permitting process, permitting package called Citizenscape, or I forgot the name of the, so there was a software package in his background and I know we're trying to move towards that.
That's a good point.
So, I mean, how do we get people to be more successful in the team without having to have face-to-face all the time? And Dan is working on that. His predecessor, Mr. Wetzel, started the process. So I think that's gonna be an opportunity for the town also going forward.
And adding to what you just said, that actually came up in the previous meeting, that, I think Alan, it was either Alan or Dan brought up this idea that the town is moving to more sophisticated streamlined communications in real time. And Daniel was already familiar with the kind of technology he was talking about.
And as an example, Charlie goes out and does a, the first inspection. He fills it out electronically or the office does. That then tells people who have a to-do, it's on your list now.
It's now on the list.
It used to be, we get together on every other Tuesday and we talk about how we're gonna get it done. And what we've discovered is, what they've discovered is, it's more efficient, it helps the applicant. If there's a problem, the applicant is informed of it, it just keeps the ball rolling and you're not constantly picking up, trying to figure out where you are, so. With that said, I will...
So I think I heard, so for three of us, possibly Ken leaning toward Mr. Ruiz, Nathan, did you have a leaning one way or another or some thoughts?
Let me make one more point and then I'll, I'll like get there. AIR is, one of the things that Mr. Keating said was to, and he's also familiar with the law and the public sector, how that works, that we need to put in place, towns need to put in place zoning, the MBTA Communities Act needs to be put in place. AIR is there. We're not perfect, but we just went through a big budget town meeting. We were able to purchase a fire truck, we're able to fund our own bridge. We aren't, AIR is positioned with form-based code. AIR is positioned with a healthy budget, with CPC monies. My point is that we, we don't need somebody to come in and put legal infrastructure onto us or to dig us out of deep financial holes where the downtown has gone to the suburbs. AIR is ready to move.
Sorry?
AIR is ready to move, AIR is ready to, as you said, dynamic. I, I think AIR is at an inflection point for, for density and for bringing in, I think, I think smaller businesses, not the big boxes, right, but smaller, smaller businesses and more residences, hopefully not all single-bedroom residents, but I hope for mixed communities. So I think, that said, you know, we need, we need energy, we need to be able to communicate. There, we will need help to implement these laws and regulations that are in place. That's where somebody experienced in the public sector may, may have edge. But I think the tilt is, is the other way to, to the skills that Mr. Ruiz brings.
I'm hearing a consensus for recommending Mr. Ruiz to Robert, is that correct?
Yes.
What I don't know is if a formal vote is required for the recommendation?
I move that we recommend Daniel Ruiz.
We might also do it this way.
Do we be offered the position of town planner for the town of AIR?
Or may I offer a friendly amendment?
Of course.
That we recommend to the town manager?
And whether we recommend to the town manager, Mr. Ruiz, be offered the position of town planner.
I'll second that.
We have a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we have a unanimous consensus to present to Robert. I'm not sure if a formal document is necessary, I will write to him tomorrow and I'll say to him, if you require something more formal, I will of course compose a memo or letter, but I'll certainly let him know of our recommendation immediately.
In every situ, if I may?
Please.
In every situation, when you're working with a new, with a possible new candidate for any position, there's going to be a give and take along the way.
Sure.
That's all, we have limited information to make that decision and I think you do the best you can and you make it work, so.
It's gonna be a learning curve for all of us.
There's always a learning curve on our side and their side, absolutely.
I don't have anything to learn.
I feel...
Maybe you can be witty.
I feel very confident that Robert, Carly, Dan and Alan, and I'm sure the others will be more than happy to help get our town planner up to speed. And certainly we will, I certainly will be, absolutely be available to our new town planner. And I suspect others may want to join in that as well, because, yes, there are a bunch of bylaws and regulations to go through, we have to bring them up to speed with the projects that we are currently involved in and what's going on, this work ahead, but I'm feeling, I'm feeling optimistic.
You know, it's interesting, I'm optimistic too, because we want, we came into this process, I've spoken to a handful of towns and a handful of communities in this area and they're all struggling to find planners. And when Robert said to me a few weeks ago, we have half a dozen qualified applicants, I was very encouraged by that.
Yeah, I just, I think AIR is well-positioned.
I do too.
You guys have done an amazing job.
I also just want to say, I was really impressed with the quality of questions that you all asked, thank you, it was great. If there are no other additional comments, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Was there nothing else on the agenda?
That's it, that's exclusive, yes, that's, I want to restrict it to the formal.
I just didn't bring the agenda copy with me.
No, there's nothing, there's nothing there.
Mr. Chair.
Meeting adjourned, everyone, thank you very much for your contributions.
Thanks, Barry.
And see you next week.